Okay, it is 6:01, so you can start whenever you'd like, Maren.
All right, let's call to order this staff review meeting for our planning commission for February 4th, 2021. Present, let's see, we have, I don't know if I see everyone. Jake Pearson, Sue Wilson, Travis Nay, Ned Hacker, Lisa Malkovich, and I'm Maren Patterson. And then from staff, we have Zach Smallwood and Susan Nixon, and oh, I see Jeremy Lowery's here as well. So we'll just begin with our conditional use permit, number four, item number four.
That's right, because we don't have minutes, so sorry, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, there were no minutes this week.
No minutes, but there were findings, if anybody had any questions about those or if they were good.
Did anyone have any questions about, they looked good?
Okay, so the first one, the Woodwood subdivision temporary conditional use for an extension, requesting another six-month extension.
Does anyone have a question real quick?
Yes.
Sorry, I guess my only questions about the findings are, Sue, are you prepared? Excellent, okay. Then my question's been answered, thanks.
So they have requested an additional six-month extension. They've already had two years. Our code does allow them to come back. The planning commission granted them a one-year extension. Originally, staff has given them another extension, and if they want any more, it requires coming back to the planning commission one more time. So Jacob Alston will be present, he will present his case, but I believe it's the extenuating circumstances are due to the COVID, and the property actually had a lot of contaminated soils specifically on the south end of the property, so it took them quite a while to get all that resolved. And so they're probably maybe a little behind schedule, but the parking lot is really important for that project. It keeps all the vehicles, most of the vehicles, off the street and into the parking lot. So that was just quick and easy. Any questions on that one?
I have a question, Susan. It's unrelated, but do you know what they're gonna do to that parcel when the parking lot goes away? Are they gonna build another home on it or parts?
Yes, yes. That will probably be the last home, or close to it, anyway, yeah. And I'm not sure how many lots are left. I asked Jacob the other day, and he wasn't sure. He cut off the top of his head, said nine or 10, so they're about done. Okay, I guess that's next.
Okay, great. So next conditional use permit is Master Muffler Electronic Messaging Sign.
Before I jump in, Jared did hop on just for a moment. He needed to talk to you guys briefly about something. Is there any way we can have him interject in this point, or do you want me to wait until after?
No, that's fine.
Okay, awesome. Then I will, I will turn it over to Jared first.
I don't know, Chairman Patterson's "that's fine" was a little unenthusiastic.
Oh, sorry, that's wonderful.
Oh, that's better, thank you, okay. So I just wanted to take just a second and let you all know, on Tuesday night, I don't know if you heard or not, and I didn't want you to hear secondhand if I could help it, so Tuesday night at the city council meeting, the council did vote to approve what's called a temporary land use restriction. And other cities call it different things, but the upside is they voted to put in the moratorium. So they've put a moratorium in place for any requests for rezones to mixed-use zones, any of our three mixed-use zones, any requests for any kind of entitlement for a mixed-use project of any kind as well in the mixed-use zones. So the moratorium means that we won't be accepting applications for any of those things for six months. They're allowed to do that for six months, and that's, after that time, it goes back to normal. So during that six months, they've asked us to start looking at options to further refine mixed-use zoning, so it will work better for the outlying areas of the city, the places where they've received applications for it, where you've all seen applications for it, and to make sure that we've addressed the different concerns that they have for mixed-use zoning as well. So we'll be talking about that a lot. We'll be talking about mixed-use zones a lot over the next six months. We just won't be talking about any specific projects in the mixed-use zone. We do have a couple that were already entitled, and the moratorium doesn't preclude those from moving forward. It just precludes any new applications. So you will be seeing one or two mixed-use projects potentially come forward to you to be reviewed during that six months, but other than that, no new ones will be brought in. So I didn't know if any of you had heard that news the other night. It was, it happened pretty quickly. We weren't expecting it. The week before the Tuesday meeting, it came up, and before we knew it, it was Tuesday night, and they were reviewing and approving, so we couldn't really have given any, any, any thought on it. It just happened fast. So any questions that you have about that for me, what the moratorium would mean? I think that's pretty much it. We just won't take any new apps right now.
Is this primarily so they can re-review the high-density housing rules? Is that...
Well, yes, yes and no. I mean, that's a big part of it. That's a big concern that they have. The areas of the city that were not already, so let me use that as a jumping off point for a quick example. Right downtown, where we have the MCCD zone, that city center district zone, the city put that in place years ago, and they did a master plan, utility plan update to make sure that they had enough capacity to handle higher-density housing in that larger area. And they were fine with that. But now people are asking for mixed-use zones and projects in other parts of the city where we didn't anticipate them being necessarily back then, up on 900 East, along State Street, in older shopping districts on State Street. They want to introduce housing components, and housing puts a different kind of a strain on utility infrastructure, and they weren't necessarily planned for that. We've started to look at it, but the council wants this moratorium in place while we really pin down what our, what our public facilities can handle, what kinds of densities they can handle, what upgrades we need to make to handle greater densities if we're gonna implement mixed uses in those areas. And that has to do with the residential part, yeah. But there are other issues too, not just the residential, but the traffic that results from it, and the parking needs that it generates, et cetera. They want to make sure that we're tailored more in our mixed-use zones.
Is it possible to have multiple mixed-use zones?
Yes, yeah, we only have the three different zones right now. South Jordan, by comparison, has 14 or 15 different mixed-use zones. They're highly specific. I'd want to kill myself if I had to administer it in different mixed-use zones, but we'll see where we end up. We really just want to take the six months with an open mind and kind of a clean slate, and really look at what we want to do. And you guys will be a big part of that, moving it forward to council. Tight timeframe, six months seems like a long time, but it'll be over before you know it. And so we started already trying to figure out what to do to start answering those questions. So as you guys have questions or input about it, feel free to let us know. Melinda, Susan, Zach, and I, we're all ready to talk about it anytime, any comments you have, so.
Jared, I know you said that the properties like RC Willie and the Point there, Barnes and Nobles, they went through prior to this, but how will this affect them?
Well, so right now, the way it stands, the, there were three applications for, to apply mixed-use zones where there had only been commercial zones before. The Point of 53rd was on the same agenda, actually, as the night that they approved the moratorium that was reviewed just slightly before that. They actually continued that review until March, I forget the date, the second meeting in March. They want to, they want us to gather a little information about the impacts for infrastructure and bring it back to them again. And then the other two have also been, they postponed on their own after a review at Committee of the Whole, the RC Willie site and the
Sports Mall.
Sports Mall site. They both willing, on their own volition, postponed their applications for the regular meetings because they felt like the response during Committee of the Whole was trending toward denial. So they wanted to kind of regroup a little bit, see what they thought, and in the meantime, so those aren't affected by the moratorium. They can move forward if they want, although the decision to implement the moratorium feels effectively like a confirmation that they were looking toward denial. So with that in mind, we're looking at those areas to try to figure out how to do mixed use there in a better way, maybe. But other, other project applications, we actually have one or potentially two project applications that are vested already that have made their applications for design or approval, master site, that have the ability to come forward, so because they're already in the process before the moratorium is passed. Okay, thanks, guys. And I will, if you don't have any other questions, I will log off and let you guys finish your pre-meeting and talk to Susan and Zach and have a good meeting. So I'll see you all next time.
Okay, thanks, Jared.
Bye-bye.
Okay, now I'll jump in to my item. Thanks for, I didn't want him to just have to sit around and wait to talk to you guys about that. So like you'd mentioned, agenda item number five is a conditional use permit to allow an electronic message center sign. This is located, you know, at the Master Muffler off State Street and 6790 South. It's, right now, there is an existing Master Muffler sign. You probably are pretty familiar with what they look like, the little guy holding out the thing with the brakes on it. All they're really doing is doing a replacement of that and putting an EMC at the bottom instead of just that change copy, which allows for differences, allows them to program it from inside and things like that. So you don't have to see people out in the snow changing it, so that's kind of nice. They have provided all the required information, stated that they'll be able to be dimmed even after installation, if they do foresee a problem, anything like that. It's a pretty basic, straightforward application, so I'll just turn it over to you if you guys have any questions about it. Happy to answer those.
Do you know how tall that building is?
The building?
Yeah, the building itself.
I don't. I don't think it's
It's a single-story, right?
Sorry?
Single-story building, right?
Yeah, I think it's only a single-story building. I think the sign is technically taller.
Yeah, okay.
Do we know if they're gonna update his haircut since they're going into the 21st century with the technology? Are they gonna do his haircut as well, or no?
No, they're gonna keep the 50s. Whoosh, so.
I hear it's coming back.
It always comes back, just keep it long enough.
Everything always comes back.
Jake, I hate to break it to you, it's not coming back for you, and it's not coming back for me.
Hey, you don't know what the future holds.
Hey, great, thank you. Zach, do anyone have any other questions about that?
I did.
Yes.
So the, the rule is that, do you have a pic, well, you'll have a picture in the meeting. The rule is that the sign can't be any more than, it can't be any closer than two feet. Is that right?
From the property line, yes.
So in the statement, it says it's 12 feet from one property line, they think the other, but if you look at the sidewalk, the sidewalk turns there, and it's a lot closer than how they depicted. So my question is, is it really two feet from the sidewalk versus where is the property line? The property line doesn't go all the way out into the sidewalk.
It doesn't, but...
It's probably easier to see if it's depicted. Anyway, it probably meets it, but it's just, it's
Yeah, and it, I anticipate that it, even then, it does meet it, but I measured it at the same place that they did their measurements.
So you measured it from the corner of the sign to the edge of the sidewalk?
Yeah, and it's, so as I measure it at this moment, it's about four feet off from that turned sidewalk.
Okay.
So it's, it would still be.
All right, anyway, all right, good. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on that one?
Um, we, let's go to agenda item number six, an accessory dwelling unit for Joshua and Tiffany Sat, did you say Sato?
Sato.
Sato, okay.
Yeah. This one is also me. This is an accessory dwelling unit application. You'll remember, just a couple months ago, we approved one, two doors down, and that went pretty quick. When the, one of the neighbors got notice of this accessory dwelling, of the previous accessory dwelling unit, he stated, well, there's a bazillion other ones that are doing the exact same thing. And so the next day, we got a code complaint. And so you will probably start to see, like, on the next agenda is another one that's on Hillside. So you're going to see a lot of accessory dwelling units on Hillside coming forward. So this, the primary residence is 2,890 square feet. The proposed ADU is 933 square feet, which is about 30%, I believe. Yeah, 32%, which is less than the 40% and less than the 1,000 square feet allowed by the ordinance. This one only has two bedrooms. It doesn't have any sneaky office rooms. It has two bedrooms. It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. They also have an easement in the backyard, a cross-access easement. So that's where they are proposing that any renters park. There is a walkout basement that is included in that as well. Pretty straightforward, again. As you know, we do not allow temporary residential rentals like Airbnbs, VRBOs. We don't allow those in Murray City and single-family zones. So we have a condition in there that specifically states that. Other than that, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. I would like to open it up for Jeremy or Jake or any other of the planning commissioners to ask any questions, because these can be kind of interesting.
In reading, in reading the, in reading the, the report, it looked like they had a history of doing nightly rentals, is that right, or short-term rentals?
It came about from either doing short-term rentals, or like I had mentioned, we had just done an accessory dwelling unit two doors down, and somebody received a notice and said, hey, there's a bunch of people that have these accessory dwelling units, and they're having people there.
So what's, what's the remedy if someone's doing that? Do they get, they get fined? Do they get, what's, yeah, what's the remedy?
It's complicated, is what it is. So state law says that the local cities cannot use the short-term rental sites as enforcement, as evidence of enforcement. So we can't say, oh, we found you on Airbnb, therefore you cannot be doing that, and we find them. So we are only allowed to act on resident complaints, which are also, usually they're using Airbnb to use that. So it's really gray, gray area that used a lot in the past. I will say, we just finished a, a short-term rental survey, received like 600 comments from residents. And so we're kind of looking at that. We're gonna bring, we're gonna be bringing to you guys a discussion item with some proposed language for short-term rental ordinance that'll help us enforce it a little bit better than we have right now. Because right now, all it would be is just a code enforcement issue, which I believe is, Jared's not here to save me tonight, so I think it's a misdemeanor, a Class B misdemeanor. But usually, we don't get to that point. Usually, most people just say, oh, I'll stop, I'll stop. So that's the really long answer.
Okay, so basically, as long as they don't have a nosy neighbor, they can do it, or a complaining neighbor?
Yeah, it's all based on, yeah, neighbor complaint.
So if we, if, I mean, if this is, if we approve, can we, you know, in the notes just state that it's approved contingent to them certifying that they won't, they won't do nightly rentals?
Yeah, so as, when they, when we issued the, the conditional use permit, it has those 13 conditions applied. So, and number 13 specifically says temporary rentals are not allowed. And, and that's one of the reasons why Maren, when she speaks to the applicant, she asks them, have you looked at these conditions? Are you able to comply with those? That, that really sets our record straight. And so that we have, they said, yes, they can apply, they can, they will be able to comply with those 13 conditions.
Cool.
Which in turn kind of strengthens the reprimand, because if they don't comply, they can lose their license, right?
Yes, most definitely.
So Zach, tell me how this is going to help them. It said in the project description that this application will help them come into conformance with the short-term rental, but I don't understand exactly, I mean, are they gonna use this as a long-term rental and do away with short-term rentals? Is that the idea?
That's, that's, that's the intent, yes. And I've talked to her specifically, and that's her intent, is that she's going to be now turning this into a longer-than-30-day rental at a time.
Okay.
I think some people skirt around that issue by also saying it's a long-term rental that they'll rent out for weekend once a month. But that meets the city's need as well, so we don't have people coming into that property every two or three days, having a party leaving, having a party leaving, even if they only want a minute for one weekend and call it a three-day rental. It still makes the community feel like it's moving, so.
Yeah, definitely a complicated issue. Are there any other questions about this item?
I would just say that this is similar to another one we looked at, several weeks ago, that has a, just happens to have a storage room in the middle of this living area, which seems a little strange, problematic for
I think we've seen
storing things at the back of an apartment.
And I, we've seen these a few times where they do have storage rooms. We've taken them at their word. Even if, if I would have included that as part of the calculation, I believe they still would have met the 1,000 square foot as well. No, they'd have been just a smidgen over. But either way, I don't, they've stated that that's not what that's used for. It's, it's for the homeowner.
But hopefully, when they get inspected, they see the only two rooms have carpet and finished floorboard and paint, and the storage room is still a cement floor, right? Hopefully, you can tell that it's a storage room that they're not gonna rent. There aren't any closets in here, so I don't know how they're gonna rent long-term. I guess you could put things in a box or hang things on a rack, but...
Okay. If there's not any further questions, we can move on to our subdivision review. Item number seven, Cushing Woods Lot Consolidation.
Thanks, this will be my item. The applicant has proposed to combine lots four and five. He's owned, he built the home on lot four, and has just left lot five vacant. This property is also under, there's an HOA that owns, well, that deals with this subdivision. The subdivision also was approved back in the day when we allowed private roads, which are no longer allowed, which, as you see in one of the conditions, the last condition, if he decides to consolidate these and goes through the process, he will not be able to re-subdivide the property in the future. So by consolidating the lots, which is allowed under our state law NC Code, both, he's not necessarily required to do a plat, but he just needs to do a consolidation and record the deeds following if he does get approved. There will remain on lot, which the new lot will be lot 4A, there's a large easement, a sanitary sewer easement that goes through the middle of the property, and then a flood plane at the very north end of the property. This property did get, to various requests for the front yard setback when it was approved, and that was due to this easement. So lot four and five have a 20-foot front setback rather than the typical 25-foot setback. This also came to us. It's been a code enforcement issue, and the applicant's been working with us for a few months, trying to weigh out his options and decide what really is the best thing for him to do. So he has finally made a decision to combine them. And, oh, there was another easement that runs from north to south in between lot four and five. He is not proposing to vacate those as of now, so that easement will remain. And if he does choose to add on to this home, or add an accessory dwelling, or, excuse me, yeah, accessory dwelling, if he decides to do that too, or an accessory structure, he would need a license to encroach over that easement. And our engineering department has indicated that they probably would approve a license to encroach, or he would have to vacate the easement by way of recording a plat in that process. Let's see. There are, the property does seem to be broadly compliant if it is approved, such as landscaping. There is no landscaping on the vacant lot, and the existing sign would need to be reduced in height to meet the current sign fence regulations, excuse me, fence regulations. That's very brief summary.
How long would he have to bring the landscaping into, into compliance with the code?
Typically, landscaping is required within one year of the lot being approved or recorded. So I would assume it would have a year, but if you wish to have a different title of it, I guess you could discuss that and decide if
I was just curious.
Yeah. Lisa, did you have a question?
No, I was saying, one year.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, anyway, this is a result of a code enforcement issue, and the property owner's been very willing and working with us, but it's taken some time because he just wanted to make sure he was doing the right thing for him long-term. So...
Hey, great. Are there any other questions? About this? All right. We have a few minutes if we want to. Does anyone want to just take a quick break before we start the meeting? All right, we will end our pre-meeting and just come back in a couple minutes. I will call to order this meeting of the Murray City Planning Commission for Thursday, February 4th, 2021. It is 6:30 PM. Present this evening, our commissioners Jeremy Lowery, Jake Pearson, Sue Wilson, Lisa Malkovich, Travis Nay, Ned Hacker, and I am the chair, Maren Patterson. With staff this evening, we have Zach Smallwood, Susan Nixon, I think Bryant Farnsworth is on. And as the chair of the Murray City Planning Commission, I, Maren Patterson, have determined that due to infectious disease, COVID-19 novel coronavirus, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 52-4-2074 allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location so long as the public had an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We are holding tonight's meeting, planning commission meeting via video conference, and the meeting is being livestreamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a public comment to submit to the planning commission, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. So we will start with the agenda this evening. Agenda item number one is approval of minutes, and we did not have minutes from our last meeting in this packet, so we will approve those at our next meeting. Agenda item number two is conflict of interest. And I'm sorry we didn't review this in our pre-meeting, but do any commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of the agenda items this evening?
No.
No. No.
And I myself do not have any conflict of interest. And I myself do not have any conflict of interest, um, for this meeting. So we'll move on to agenda item number three, uh, approval of finding a fact. Um, have the commissioners had an opportunity to review all of the findings, the facts, and conclusions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, Dan.
Two, um, one for access auto brokers, um, for a conditional use permit to allow the vehicle sales and Depot Commercial LLC for a temporary conditional use permit for a mobile office building on their property. Um, is there a motion for these finding of fact?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the findings of fact for a conditional use permit to Jamie Hanson doing business as Access Auto Broker's auto sales located at forty-fifth, forty-five, fifty-five South Commerce Park Drive. And a motion to approve a temporary conditional use permit for Clint Tolman doing business as Depot Commercial LLC to allow a mobile office building at two thirty-two and two forty-eight West Forty-eight Sixty South.
Wonderful, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Great, so I have a motion by Sue Wilson, um, to approve the finding of fact for this two conditional use permits, and a second by Ned Hacker. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, we will move on to our conditional use permit portion of our agenda this evening. Uh, Windward Subdivision is requesting a six-month extension for a temporary parking lot for a model, model home located at seven oh nine West Windward Park. Um, is the applicant here in our meeting this evening? Yes, okay. Um, we will have our staff report by Susan Nixon.
Thank you, I will hopefully share my screen.
Yeah, you can, I'm sorry, that was my fault.
All right, see, are you seeing that? There we go. Okay, um, you can see that, correct?
No, it's not.
Oh, boy.
Want me to sneak over real quick?
Yep, you might have to.
Okay, hold on.
Mess, Zach.
Share.
Oh, yeah, oh.
Now we're good.
There you go.
Ta-da, okay, I'm sorry, got to double-click. Okay, we got it. Okay, so this is for Windward Subdivision. Um, Carpet Homes developed the project, uh, a couple of years ago. Planning Commission, um, approved a temporary parking lot, which is shown on this map down in that corner of Seventh West and entering into the subdivision. This is not an accurate, up-to-date aerial of the property, obviously, it's been developed into a subdivision, but gives you the proximity of where the parking lot is. Um, so the Planning Commission approved a temporary conditional use for a paved parking lot in February of two thousand nineteen, and it was good for one year. Our code allows, uh, an extension to be allowed for another si- another thirteen, eighteen months potentially, six months at a time, and those can be approved by staff. Uh, we did approve the extensions, and those extensions have, it will expire on February twenty-first of this year. Property Zone R one-six, uh, just south of Winchester Mobile Home Park. These are a couple of pictures of the actual parking, uh, parking lot. As you enter the subdivision, this is on the south side of the street. Uh, when I was there the other day, I actually was really thrilled to see this parking lot being utilized as much as it is. It does help prevent parking on the street and, um, is actually a great asset to this project. Um, but but they are asking for another six-month extension, and potentially, they could do up to another twelve months total, which would be the last and the final that they could get. Um, the granting of the extension, as per our code, um, Tile seventeen dot fifty-six nine dot one hundred does indicate that where there's a hardship or unusual circumstances, the Planning Commission, uh, may extend the temporary permit for one more year, and the extension's to be granted in two separate six-month increments. This property, uh, some of you may remember, when it got approved, there was some contamination on the property on the south side, and I believe the, and Jacob will can expound on this, but I believe the hardship associated with this is it took longer to clean up the property to get it going, and there are a hundred and twenty-six, I believe, lots total. And also because of COVID, that has had an effect on it like all of us have, so. But if different, Jacob, let me know, that's kind of my observation. So based on that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve a six-month time extension subject to the conditions outlined below, and if so, this temporary, uh, approval would expire on August twenty-one of this year. They are eligible for one more extension. If the Planning Commission wants to consider just granting two six-month extensions, that's also an option, but that is up to you total. So that is the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
I think it looks good.
Great. So the applicant, um, Zach, do you need him to raise his hand?
I think he is here, so.
I'm here, Jacob's here.
Oh, perfect. Um, have you had an opportunity to read over these conditions of approval?
Yes.
Great, and are you able to comply?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful, is there any additional information that you would like to give us about this request?
Susan's presentation was sufficient. Um, all I would add is that I think six months is is satisfactory. We won't need two six-month extensions, just one should be fine. Um, we're getting near the end out there as far as sales related, and I want our guys to start this house no later than August twenty-first, so if you give us that deadline, then we have extra motivation to start it.
Okay, that's good feedback, yes, thank you so much. Um, meeting for public comment regarding this item. Um, if you would like to make a comment on this agenda item, you may do so by emailing your comment to planningcommission@murray.utah.gov, or if you are participating in this me- uh, meeting via Zoom webinar registration, and you may wish to make a live comment, please click the raise your hand button. Um, if you are making a live comment, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. And if you have already submitted an email comment regarding this item, we, uh, it will be read into the record during the public comment portion, and we ask that you do not make any additional live comments. Uh, have we received any emails or anything regarding this application so far?
I, no, I don't believe so.
Okay.
We we haven't received any previous to tonight's meeting, and I don't see any email comments.
Okay, well, um, we'll just leave the public comment open for just a minute in case any come in. Has anyone raised their hand or anything, Zach? Okay. Um, okay, what do you think?
It is up to, it is completely up to you how long you would like to leave it open.
I think we're good, we didn't even receive a single phone call on this.
We haven't heard anything.
Yeah.
I don't want to cut it short, um, but I think that maybe we can close the public comment period. Um, is there any discussion, um, among the commissioners about this item? Any questions for the applicant or for their, okay? And then if not, um, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Madam Chair? No, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the six-month extension of the temporary use permit for the property at Seventh West Windward Park Drive.
Great.
I'll second.
To the conditions.
Pardon me, point order with the five conditions as discussed. Can we add that to the mo- motion? Mr. Lowry?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Lowry to approve the six-month time extension of the temporary conditional use permit, um, for a parking lot at the property address seven oh nine West Windward Park Drive, subject to the five conditions in the report, and a second by Travis Nay. Um, is there any additional comments or discussion on this motion? Okay, um, we can take a vote.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Lowry?
I approve.
Uh, Commissioner Nay?
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes, okay, um, wonderful, we, uh, your motion, your motion is gr- and to, oh, sorry, my bad. Um, motion passes and good luck with your project. So, I, I am, number five, Master Muffler Electronic Message Sign. And we'll have a presentation by Zach.
You will in just a moment, let's see. All right, can you guys all see my screen?
Yes.
That we are not Windward anymore, so here we go. All right, so, um, agenda item number five is Master Muffler, uh, requesting a conditional use permit for Electronic Message Center sign at sixty-seven ninety South State Street. Um, you can see here an aerial, um, sixty-seven ninety is the cross street, State Street going north and south. It is located in the CD zone that does allow for Electronic Message Center signs subject to obtaining a conditional use permit. Um, you can see here, uh, this, this image was also in your packet. Um, it's not changing that much, so, um, Mr. Master Muffler here is instead gonna get rid of that pipe or whatever that he's gonna beat somebody with, and instead exchange it for a tire. Um, and also, uh, this changed what i- in the sign industry, they call a change copy, so that's individual letters being, I I don't know how they stick up there, I think it's magic. Um, so, um, in for a, uh, LE sign. Um, it does conform with all of the standards that we have in our zoning ordinance. Um, I I had to go out, well, I didn't have to go out, I used a software to make sure that this entire little guy made, uh, added up to the adequate amount of sign face that is allowed per s- per, per area. So, um, I did verify that. Um, and the applicant, I believe it was included in with your packet, has stated, um, had this, has addressed all the items that was, um, that was required. Um, the stating that it will be, will not exceed the point-three-foot candle brightness over ambient lighting. Um, any message on the EMC will, EMC will remain lit no less than two seconds. Um, and then operated, uh, it will not be operated between ten PM and six AM the next day, uh, um, except for a static image. Um, and then also five percent of the time of the EMC is used for public messages. Typically, that's the time and temperature, um, as we've learned so many times in the past. And as just a, uh, little comment, Midvale City has put up a new monument right across the street from my house, so now from my bedroom, there's a great big bright sign. So that's neither here nor there, sorry, that was me venting a smidgen. Um, so we are recommending approval for this sign. Um, oh, I'm sorry, the setbacks here. Um, the setbacks are the, a a minimum of two feet off of the, um, property lines. Um, in the pre-meeting, I just want to clarify, Commissioner Hacker brought up whether this is truly um, twelve feet from here to here. Um, I did do a quick measurement, and we were about four feet off um, on the aerial that I meant, measured, four feet off from here to here, and then about six feet from here to here. So this is, this, this drawing is a little off, but it still is, meets the, the, um, the setback requirements. So with that, uh, we are recommending that the Planning Commission approve the con- additional use permit for the EMC sign, um, subject to the three conditions um, before you and within your staff report. So any questions for staff at this point? All right, do you guys want me to leave this up, or do you want me to stop sharing so you all can see yourselves?
Um, I think maybe leave it for the applicant. Um, just to see, I mean, I know he got the conditions, but, um, yes, the applicant, is he or they present?
Yes, I believe he is. If if the applicant could click the raise hand button, um, I can unmute you. There we go.
Hello, I'm here, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can, would you please, uh, state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name's William David Levitt, uh, my business address is sixteen oh five East Oxford Club Circle, Draper, Utah.
Wonderful.
And I'm a, I'm the salesman on this project and a partner in the company.
Okay, great, thank you for being with us this evening. Um, have you had an opportunity to, uh, read the conditions of approval for this application?
I have, yes.
And great, will you be able to comply with those?
Uh, well, they seem pretty straightforward, the point-three-foot candles too, that, uh, we can supply a photo-metrics chart if you'd like to see one on that, uh, so you can see the distance, uh, fifty-eight-point-eight feet, the corner of your formula there away from it, a point-three-foot candles, yeah, that's, that's easy. The software itself also, uh, intensifies or diminishes the brightness of the message center, so that's adjustable from the computer, so it's nothing that's set that can't be adjusted.
Wonderful, um, is there any other additional information you would like to give the commissioners about this project?
No, I I just, I think it'll be a great upgrade to the area down there. The sign they got's pretty old and, uh, uh, bad-looking, so this, this will be a beautiful sign. We did one similar to it in Leighton, Utah, and, uh, what we did up there did nothing but make the, the community uh, look better driving down the road up there. Like I say, the old one was rusty and and bad looking.
Wonderful, okay, we will, um, have you, and in case there's any questions during the public comment, we'll have the applicant um, stay with us, but, um, at this time, we, I will now open the meeting for public comment. Um, if you would like to make a comment on this agenda item, you may do so by emailing or if you are participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar registration, and you wish to make a live comment, please click raise your hand. And if you are making a live comment, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. And if you have submitted an email comment previous to the meeting, it will now be read into the record, but we ask you to do not make any additional live comments. Um, Zach, did we receive any emails or, um, before the meeting about this item?
Um, no, I received a phone call, um, between when your packets went out and, and now. Um, I I apologize, I didn't, I don't remember the gentleman's name now off the top of my head. Um, but all, he was just, he just had general questions, um, about it. Um, I explained kind of how the floodcandles work and everything, and he was, um, he he was completely fine with it. Um, and yeah, there was, uh, no concerns there, but other than that, I have not heard anything.
Okay. We will. We will, we invite anyone, if they want to make a comment regarding this item, that they can raise their hand now and we will leave it open to any emails that come in.
It looks like there is a hand up, so I will.
Hey Zach?
Yeah.
We did receive actually one email from a Joanne, don't have a last name. If you don't mind, I'll just hurry and read it. We did receive this on Saturday, January twenty third. She states, I, I'm in favor of this request for William Levitt to change the sign up Master Muffler Electronic Message, Electronic Messaging is beneficial to the area and I see it as a plus for the neighborhood. Master Muffler has been an exceptional business, always cognizant of best practices, friendly, kind and clean. And she's a resident at South Sixty Seven Condos.
Great, thank you.
And it looks like we have a Brian Everill that rose his hand and so he is allowed to speak now.
Brian Everill, just owner of the Master Muffler there in Murray. Wanted to thank the council personally for the consideration and I'm super glad you guys like his haircut.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comment. There any additional comments or emails?
I've not seen any come in yet.
Okay, well, I will close the public comment period for this application. Is there any discussion for the commissioners about this project?
Madam Chair? Can I make a motion? Ned, were you about to ask a question? Okay, can I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move that we approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of an electronic messaging center sign at the property address sixty seven ninety South State Street subject to the three conditions as discussed.
I will second that.
Perfect. So I have a motion by Commissioner Milkovich to approve a conditional use permit to allow construction and operation of an electronic message center sign at the property sixty seven ninety South State Street, subject to the three conditions. And a second by Commissioner Lowry. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, then we can take a vote.
All right, Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. Motion approved and good luck with your sign and thank you for coming and being here tonight for this project. So we will item. A conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit located at three nine East Hillside Drive. Are the applicants here tonight? Yeah, great. Okay. We'll have our staff presentation.
Great, thank you so much. Let me just get settled in here again. Okay, as you had mentioned, this is a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit at the subject property three ninety eight East Hillside Drive. As you can see in the aerial, just on the corner of Hillside. And I don't know why I said that because I don't remember what the name of the street is. So it's Hillside right here. So I apologize for that. And it is in the R one eight zone, which does allow for accessory dwelling units subject to obtaining a conditional use permit approval from the planning commission. So before you is actually, let's, I'll go back to this one. There is, this is a point four acre site. So a little less than a half acre with a two thousand eight hundred ninety square foot primary residence and proposing a nine hundred and thirty three square foot accessory dwelling unit, which is approximately thirty two percent of the primary dwelling, which does meet our code for it to be less than forty and no larger than a thousand square feet. We do ask that they provide an additional parking, parking space for the accessory dwelling unit. And on this site plan, you can see here, they, they have provided a back driveway area that's served by, sorry, I'm gonna just keep, I'm gonna give you guys seizures from flipping through these too many times. But there is a, a cross access easement right here that allows access to the rear of these properties. They're proposing to park, you can see a car actually there to park there for the entrance to the accessory dwelling unit. So now I'll move on. So it gets a little twisty. So the site plan is based with north at the bottom and south at the top. But the floor plans, now we've kind of flipped that. So the front is on the north and the back of the house is at the bottom, at the south end. So this is the main, the primary dwelling area. So this doesn't apply as much, just gives you a little bit of background information. This is more what we, we like to see, which is the actual floor plan of the accessory dwelling unit. You can see the living room, a kitchen, washroom and storage with a hallway with two bedrooms and a bathroom. And the entrance, as you'll see on the next slide, here, I found these cool aerial photos. And you can see the entrance right here. There's a little white door and then you guys are in my way, so I can't see that. So there is a door on this one as well. So it does meet all the requirements of the land use ordinance for accessory dwelling units. So we are recommending approval of this conditional use permit subject to the thirteen conditions as outlined, outlined in your staff report and on the screen here. Any questions I can answer right now? Okay.
Great, thank you so much, Zach. Is the applicant, would they raise their hand?
Hi, I'm here, sorry.
No, great. Thank you for being with us. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Tiffany Sato, three ninety eight East Hillside Drive, Murray, Utah.
Great. And have you had an opportunity to read over the conditions of approval?
Yes, I have.
And will you be able to comply with those?
Yes.
Wonderful. Is there any additional information that you would like to give the commission this evening?
I don't believe so. I think you covered it all. Sorry for the site plans. I'm not very good at drawing those up myself.
No worries that they were, thank you for submitting those. Okay, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? All right. Well, we will open this meeting for public comment regarding this item. So if you would like to make a comment, you can email planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Or if you are participating in the Zoom webinar, you can make a comment by clicking the raise hand button. And if you make a live comment, we ask that you limit it to three minutes. And if you have submitted an email previous to the meeting, we ask you to do not make a live comment tonight. Did we receive any emails about this previous meeting, Zach?
Not a word.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Great. So we will leave this open if anyone wants to raise their hand and make a live comment or email in about this.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything come in yet.
Okay. Well, with that, then I think we can probably close the public comment portion. And I will, is there any discussion or emotion about this item?
I'll make a motion that the planning commission approves a conditional use permit to allow the construction and or operation of an accessory dwelling unit at the property addressed three ninety eight East Hillside Drive, subject to conditions one through thirteen.
I'll second it.
Great. I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and or operation of an accessory dwelling unit at the property address three ninety eight East Hillside Drive subject to the thirteen conditions and a second by Commissioner Pearson. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, then we will take a vote.
Hey, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. The motion passes and congratulations and good luck with your accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Okay, so our next agenda item is agenda item number seven, a subdivision review requesting a consolidation of lots four and five. Is the applicant here? Well, we will have our staff report by Susan Nixon and then maybe they can.
Okay. I think Zach, you need to turn it over to me. Unless you want to run it. That's okay too. Okay. Thank you. This is a application for Cushingwood subdivision amendment to lots four and five. The property is located just off of forty eight hundred south and about eight hundred east. There's two lots at the very end of the subdivision. Subdivision was approved in two thousand and five. And it was approved with, the road here is is a private road. Back in two thousand and five, we allowed subdivisions to be approved with a private road. There's also an HOA associated with this subdivision that does have restrictive covenants. State law does allow the combining of two lots when they are in a subdivision with planning commission approval. And they do not necessarily have to record a plat. They can, but they do have this option of doing a lot consolidation and recording deeds afterwards if approved by the planning commission. It is located in the R one eight zone. The two lots view of the original Cushingwood subdivision and it would be lot four and five here at the north end. There is a large sewer easement that runs along both of the lots here. And those easements will stay. And because of those easements, the board adjustments granted front yard setback variances for these lots. And the lots are, minimum is a twenty foot front setback where typically it would be twenty five feet. Over here is the exhibit of combining of the lots four and five, which would make lot four A. Lot four A would then, if they are combined, is point five seven acres, which is more than adequate for what they need for the area. On lot four is a dwelling, as you can see. And on lot five, which is actually to the right here, is a vacant property. This proposal actually is a result of a code enforcement issue. We've been, I've been working with Mr. Hall for a few months and so has our code enforcement officers to try to bring this into compliance. It's taken a little longer than probably typically because I think Mr. Hall has done an excellent job of researching and he wanted to make sure that what he decided to do would be the correct thing for him long term. And just recently decided that he would pursue combining the two lots. Oh, let me go back to this again. There's also an easement that is between lots four and five. And that easement will remain if he chooses to add on to the existing home or add an accessory structure or possibly even an accessory dwelling unit if approved. He could apply to get a license to encroach over this easement or he would have to come back and vacate that easement through a plat amendment again. And he's aware of all these. So here's a view of the vacant lot, lot, which is lot five. And it does have, you can see an accessory structure and a playground and over here a motorhome, which is on a paved. It is paved, it is parked on. Which is required by code. And then I'm just gonna review a couple of the issues with the property. Because of the variance that was granted for the front yard setback, any landscaping and fencing would also coincide with the twenty foot setback. So the frontage landscaping for the lot would be the first twenty feet of the lot and would have to be installed. Typically, landscaping needs to be installed within one year of the subdivision approved or the lot approved. So he may, I guess, it would be up to you if you decide to have a different timeframe for that. There is also a, oh, let me go back to this. The fence here which is on lot five is a six foot fence with a wrought iron gate. And it is up to the property line. Currently, that does not meet our fencing regulations. In the front setback, which is twenty feet, the maximum height for a solid fence is three feet. So he would need to modify this fence, reduce it in height and bring it into compliance. Let's see what else. Any vehicles parked on the, as I said, are parked on the vacant lot, does have to be on a hard surface. And let's see, there were a couple of other issues with that. There is one section of the code where it talks about accessory buildings or structures. This is in section seventeen one hundred oh nine oh of the R one eight zone that does say accessory buildings or structures shall be compatible with the exterior color and materials of the dwelling or shall utilize earth earth, earth tones. So I don't know if planning commission wants to consider any of that or or if we can really impose that. I don't know for sure. I don't know if we really have in the past too much, but that question has come up with a couple of the HOA neighbors. So based on the review of this application, Mr. Hall is in agreement with the conditions as presented there, conditions one through ten. And I've discussed these with him. He is good with them. The one condition that I would like to emphasize is condition number ten, where it states that allows creation of new residential lots on private roads. So therefore, if this is consolidated, if he doesn't, if Mr. Hall does go through with this and does consolidate the lots and records it, he will not be able to subdivide this property in the future. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Susan, I've got a question. I noticed in my packet, I don't have a notarized copy of the application. Is that necessary or do you have one or do we not need to worry about that?
Good question, actually. On the lot line adjustment slash consolidation document, we don't have, we don't require a signature for the actual application. But in the, if the planning commission approves it, I drafted a document which is called But in the, if the planning commission approves that, I drafted a document which is called notice of approval. And at that point, any owners, or in this case, it's just Mr. Hall, the owner or owners are required to sign that and that is notarized, has to be notarized. And also, the city approval has to be notarized along with, the city signature has to be signed and notarized also. And then that is what's recorded in the county. So ultimately, we do need to get, we will get their signed, notarized signature.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great question.
And then, Ms. Patterson, I'm sorry, I have two questions. Can we go back actually to the image that shows the front of the existing home and the drive access? So that picture right there. So can you help me understand what would be required of the fencing change on the new lot?
Yes. So this home, I'm not sure of the exact setback, but I'm going to guess it's probably close to 20 feet just because of that variance and the setbacks that were required. So the fence that's along here is actually, go back here, it is right this section here of lot five. So the home on lot four A is about in this area. And the front yard would then be, oops. Front yard would then be basically here, straight across.
Okay. And then with that, does the accessory dwelling or the accessory building that's currently on lot number five, it would be in conformance once the lots are consolidated?
Yes, because it is technically in the side yard. I guess we'd have to check to make sure that it's not on the easement on the east side. Would have to review that if this does get approved. That would have to be addressed for sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Nixon. That was my question about the accessory dwelling. Do they, I think, has that accessory dwelling gone through the proper procedure to be approved? And if not, that would be something that still needs to occur, but not coinciding with this item tonight.
Yep. Mr. Hall has not actually applied for the ADU at this point. That was one of the issues he really needed to decide whether he wanted to keep the lot separate and build a home on this lot or consolidate it. And based on if he consolidated it, then he may decide to have an ADU. He hasn't really decided at that point. That's why it kind of took him a while and he was communicating with the HOA members and, you know, trying to make sure they were okay with it and letting him, letting them know that he was working on this. So he would have to come back and apply for an ADU if he decides to do that or if he decides to add on to the home. That would have to be reviewed either, you know, by staff or ADU by the planning commission. He hasn't decided about that yet, no.
That little blue house might just be his fishing cabin because it's right on the creek. That might just be where the, you know, that's where the fishing poles are.
There you go.
That's actually for his grandchildren, I believe. That's what he put it there for, but he can expand on anything that, yeah.
It's cute.
It is cute, but the color of it would be addressed at the time of when he's getting the ADU request to have it approved or not approved, right? Not, not tonight, right?
Uh, right. Well, that, that would not be the ADU. I don't think, I'm, I think it's more of a playhouse. I don't think it would even come close to ADU. Well, I shouldn't say that. It probably would have to be upgraded or changed, you know, to meet actual dwelling, building code issues. But so that will have to be addressed. And if he does decide to do an ADU, that will be factored in as far as the location and if they meet setbacks, et cetera, right?
That, that's all kinds of interesting questions because I think, maybe I'm not looking at right, but I think there's a power box on the side of it. So it looks like it's up and running. It looks livable. It's good.
Good for them. You know what it is? It's, it's, it's an accessory building, not really an accessory dwelling. It's an accessory building, like a shed, like a shed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really, I don't think we've, like Susan said, it's not really an ADU at this point.
Right. It is not an ADU. Sorry, Susan.
But regardless of the fact, it's an illegal building at this point in time because it's on a primary lot and there's not a primary structure. It is an accessory unit.
My understanding though is consolidating the lots would make it now just an accessory building on one lot, right? He'd be in compliance.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, which is what he wants to do. So yes, by consolidating it, it would at least make the accessory structure accessory to the main dwelling where now it is not.
It's not, okay.
Right.
Wonderful. Are there any other questions? Okay, well, um, is the applicant present?
I do not see him on.
Okay.
That is interesting. I actually emailed him today and he said he was all on board and was aware of the meeting tonight and would be here. So I, I'm surprised he's not here.
Well, um, we move forward anyway, right? Okay. Um, we will now open this application up to public comment. And so if you would like to make a comment on this agenda item, you can email planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. And or if you are participating in this meeting, you can make a live comment by clicking raise hand. And we ask you to keep your comment to three minutes. And if you have already previously submitted an email comment, it will be read into the record now. But we ask you, don't make any additional live comments. And Susan, did we receive any emails before the meeting?
Yes, we actually received two, both are residents in the subdivision. And one particularly is the president of the HOA. And I believe Zach is going to read those comments for me.
Yes. Yes, I will be reading those. So we received the first one today, Thursday, the fourth at 1:46 from, excuse me, Craig Ames for Cushing Woods HOA. On behalf of Cushing Woods HOA, note the following. One, the original CCNRs for the HOA only allow single-family homes on the lots. We are disappointed that approval of combined lots overrides the HOA CCNRs and thereby allows the use of lot five that does not meet the CCNR requirement for a single-family dwelling. Two, lot five has been a vacant lot from initial approval back in approximately 2005. Lot five has since been used for illegal accessory uses. City code enforcement has ignored the illegal accessory uses. Approval of combining the two lots as is amounts to a complicit approval of illegal accessory uses. We are pleased, however, that accessory uses on the larger lot will now clearly have to meet R18 zoning requirements and be more manageable. Three, please clarify front yard setback lines, parking access and associated paving requirements and landscape and time for completion to bring the lot into code and zoning compliance. Also address front yard fencing, location and height requirements, color compatibility for existing structures. Four, clarify requirements if allowed for a future accessory dwelling unit or a detached garage, et cetera. Thanks, Craig Ames. And then the second one is from a Stan Paul. We received this at 5:28 this evening. The only question I have is if you combine the lots, can he turn it into a junkyard with cars, motorhome that have never been moved or driven and is not registered for years? They drive in the mud and track it all the way up to 4800 South. Would he have to pave a driveway to drive on? I am not sure what the rules would be for that use, for the use of the lot.
Great. Are there any raised hands? People that like to make a live comment?
I do not have any additional comments or anyone's hand up.
Okay. Um, hello, the public comment period. And Susan, I feel like some of the things we addressed in your presentation, is there anything from those comments that you want to address?
Um, well, I think we did cover some of them. By combining the lots, it does eliminate the issue of the accessory structures on a lot where there's not a main dwelling. So it would resolve that. And I think it went over the fencing setbacks and the front yard landscaping requirements. And I'm happy to expand on those if you have questions on it. As far as the drive accesses, a residential lot is allowed to have two drive accesses or two driveways, assuming that we allow, we would approve it and the engineering department would approve it also. They do have to be at least 35 feet minimum between the two driveways, drive approaches and 12 feet wide, 30 feet maximum. So he could possibly have it in the driveway. We do not allow junkyards. So if it is a junkyard or junk vehicles, that is our code enforcement officers and they are actually really on top of it. And they're aware of this property and just kind of waiting to see if planning commission approves the lot consolidation. And then that tells them where they need to start pursuing what issues at that point. And let's see, I think, is there anything else? Drive, oh, driveways, let me just explain this. The front yard may not be used for vehicle parking except on a paved driveway used for access to a garage or carport or which provides access to the rear yard. So you can't have a driveway that just goes to nowhere, basically. So we would have to work with him on that if he chooses to have another driveway.
Okay. Great.
Was there, did I cover all the concerns?
Yeah, I think that that was.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Nixon, do we have anything to say about CCRs versus city ordinances?
Good question. CCNRs are totally separate from city regulations. We do not enforce CCNRs. So that's up to the HOA if they want to pursue that. All we can enforce and regulate are city codes.
Great question. And is there any other further discussion or questions about this item? Any thought? Alright, and then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, I guess, that the planning commission approve the Cushing Woods subdivision amendment for consolidation of lots four and five, located at 4733 and 4737 South Hidden Woods, Hidden Woods Lane, subject to conditions one through 10 as we discussed.
I'll second that motion.
Great. I have a motion by Commissioner Pearson and a second by Commissioner Hacker to approve the Cushing Woods subdivision amendment for consolidation of lots four and five, located at 4733 and 4737 South Hidden Woods Lane, subject to the 10 conditions. And is there any additional discussion on this motion? Okay, and I will call for a vote.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. So motion passes and good luck to the applicant in consolidating his lots. Okay, um, we, is there any other business?
Um, not much. We do have a big project coming up that might get some, some news. It's the vine. It's right off of, it's where the old first ward building was. So that is coming forward, should be on the next agenda. So I would anticipate. Other than that, I think it's pretty light. You have another ADU. I know those are super controversial. But other than that, I don't think we have, have much. Jared kind of dropped the big one on you later earlier today, so.
Yeah. I was going to comment. Some of you are probably wondering about training since I sent out an email a while ago about that. So I asked Jared about that today and we still are trying to figure out when. But due to this moratorium and the assignments we've been given to look at the fixed use zones again, it prob, the training will probably be delayed for a while. Because, yeah, that's a huge undertaking for us. But for the two new members, Jeremy and Jake, if you would like any training or information, feel free to contact our office and we're happy, we're happy to provide whatever you need and help you, whatever, to kind of get you up to speed, even though you're doing a fabulous job. We are happy to help you in that. So anyway.
Thank you. Hey, Susan, Susan, are they still doing land use 101? The city league and county, are they still doing land use 101?
No, they do. I don't know when the next one is. I can check that and get back with you. I have not seen any emails about it recently, but I can certainly check that. Because those are very helpful. Yeah, I think you went to one, didn't you? Yeah.
I've been to a couple of them, yeah.
Yeah, good idea, good idea.
Yeah, definitely.
And then when we do have our training meeting, you guys are going to like DoorDash dinner to our houses, right? So that we can have.
And now that you get your big paychecks.
Yeah.
Increase in, I'm just kidding, just kidding.
We can afford our own DoorDash? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but no, but yeah, well, we could, we could check into the DoorDash for sure as an option, yeah.
I feel if Jared, more so than Susan, sorry, if Jared's involved in catering, it has to involve swing.
Yeah, you're right.
Always.
Okay, well, thank you everyone for being here. Thank you for being part of this meeting tonight. If there is no additional business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
With a time.
7:30 PM and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second the 7:30 PM motion.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, you guys.
Yeah, everybody.
Night.
Good weekend.
Yes.